Good morning. Happy New Year and welcome to the January 25th, 2021 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If everyone would stand please. Commissioner Marvin Whitworth will lead us in our prayer and our pledge.
Marvin.
Let us bow together. Holy Father, we are indeed grateful for the blessings of the day that you were able to wake us this morning to give us the opportunity to serve you and to serve our fellow man. Father, our prayer this morning is for our country, that you will bless it, that you will ease the divide that we have, and Father, we know that that divide will be eased by following your ways. Father, we pray for this meeting this morning. May our deliberations be those that would be best for our community, that we can all join in together and do what is best for all involved. Father, forgive us when we failed you in Christ's name. Amen. Now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Got a copy of the statement here somewhere. This meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission is being conducted electronically pursuant to Governor Bill Lee's Executive Order 16. I would ask for a motion that conducting this meeting electronically is necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare in light of the coronavirus.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Your answer will also serve as our roll call. Gail.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Cusch.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Have a quorum and the motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate that. This time every year, we need to elect a chair and vice chair for the current year. Jim Everwater, Charlotte P., and Chip Pinion have served on the nominating committee, and I believe they have a recommendation. Jim, are you out there?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair. The nominating committee has met and has recommended you, Jeff Phillips, to continue as chair, and Pettis Reed to continue as vice chair, and therefore, the nominating committee moves that these people be reelected for those respective roles this year.
There's a motion.
Sorry.
And a second. Any other nominations from the floor? Call or roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Cusch.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
I guess yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Gail. On behalf of Pettis, we will do our best to continue along the lines that we have the last couple of years, and appreciate your confidence in us doing that. We have minutes to approve from our January 11th meeting. I'll call on a vice chair, Pettis Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I have copies of those minutes, and I have read those minutes, and at this time, I'd like to move that they be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from our January 11th meeting. Please call a roll, Gail.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Marvin Whitworth. Yes.
Mike Cusch.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have no items withdrawn or deferred, and that gets us into our regular new business. It's item 6A. These are waiver requests, 6A1. The item number is 21-4001. Donald and Debra Kyle requesting a waiver from the 50-foot access easement width requirement for property located along Spantown Road. Tax map is 76. Doug.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good morning, Planning Commission members. As you stated, the applicant seeking a waiver to the easement width requirement, the applicant owns about 63 acres of land along Spantown Road that they'd like to split into a 15-acre tract from the parent tract for their daughter with an access using a private easement. The property has about 25 feet of road frontage, which is less than the 50-foot requirement, so the applicant has attempted to secure additional easement from his neighbor, but has not been able to come to any kind of an agreement. So he's asking for a waiver to the 50-foot easement width requirement. I did include some additional information. It's kind of a sketch layout, kind of showing you what the proposal is and how they want to break up the property. The applicant is present and will be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time. This would be the only waiver they would have to seek for this, since it's an acreage tract.
What is the current access to that property?
It's through that little, the flagpole portion, like a flag lot, that's through that. It was still, the access would be through that same little skinny portion of the lot.
But that is in that section.
Correct. Yeah. That won't change. For either lot, it won't change.
Same as Georgia.
Sorry?
Same as Georgia.
Yes, sir.
One thousand.
Yes, the total's 25 feet on the front. So they would need to, they're just asking for the waiver to use what's existing as opposed to getting any additional.
Suppose just like one house going to be back there?
Yes, just, well, two total, their house and then one for their daughter. So there'd be two houses total.
Well, this is all family.
Sorry.
This is all family.
Yes, sir.
That's involved in it.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 21-4001 for Donald and Debra Kyle. Any other questions or comments?
Any future changes would of course have to come back to us for any approvals.
Absolutely.
Like if they wanted to split off again or anything.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Anything else? Call or roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Cusch.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6B submitted for preliminary plan approval, 6B1. The item number is 21-1001. Lewis Downs, Section 6, 47 lots on 27-plus acres, Zoned RM, located along Rhonda Drive. Salem Creek Partnership is the applicant. Doug.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This phase of the Lewis Downs development, I believe, is the final phase. The section contains 47 lots total and appears to be consistent with the original master plan for the property. We have sent several comments to the applicant's design engineer for correction. Those items have been addressed or will be addressed during the construction plan process. There are also some comments I need to work at with CUD. The applicant is aware of those comments. They've been being with CUD to rectify those issues, but nothing at this point that we see should hold up any kind of approval on this. So at this point, we'd recommend approval and be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions?
Make motion approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve 21-1001, Lewis Downs, Section 6, preliminary plan. Other questions or comments? Call or roll, Gail.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Cusch.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
6B, item submitted for site plan approval, 6B1. Item number is 21-3001. Advanced Lawn Solutions, construction of 7,500 square foot of sales and office building area upon .8 acres, Zone CS, located along Forest Lane. Sweet, family, recoverable trust?
Talkable.
Thank you. Is the applicant, Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Parcel 5.03, when you look on your staff comments, you'll see we've got the tax map parcels on both of those, was rezoned to commercial services back in 2014. The parcel next to it had a pre-existing business, and it was there when the current zoning ordinance took effect back in 2013, so it was also Zoned CS at that time. They are proposing to make, add a new building onto the property. Your comments say 7,500 square feet. I think that was the information we had at the time. It's closer to about 6,800, 6,900 in actuality, so that's been addressed. The building is on a separate lot, but will act as an expansion to the existing business on parcel 5.04. They are, when you look at the plan, they are including an access easement between the two. Again, this gives them the ability to kind of use it as one property, but gives them the latitude, should they ever decide to sell one property to the other, that they could do that and still have two functioning businesses on each, one on each property. We did have several comments on here. Most of our comments have been addressed to staff satisfaction. I believe Mike did have a couple of comments he did want to say, so I'll turn it over to Mike at this point.
Mainly it's just some fine tuning. They're, like Doug said, they're proposing a joint access easement between the two lots that we'll need to see that, I guess, recorded to make sure that stays in place. And if you look at the turning movements of the large vehicles, hold on just a second while I get there. We want to make sure that the turning movements are incorporated in that easement plan. Somewhere in this set of plans, there is a turning movement. Here we go. All right, here's one of them, and I think they have added this little area, so we're pretty good, but we just want to make sure there's a little leg right here that kind of sticks out of, out of that joint access easement, but we want to make sure that it's covered in that easement and won't be an issue to future users of these properties. So, and there is an exterior loading dock. You can kind of see it here, that a semi could back up to and unload its cargo. We just need some clarification on that. Before, it was just a dock and a ramp down, and now they're showing a door at the top of the dock at a higher elevation than the proposed floor. We just need to know what's going on inside to make sure that's going to function properly. Like I said, it's just minor fine tuning issues, and I think, Douglas, what about the landscaping on the south side?
Yeah, we needed to, yeah, for the most, we just needed to clarify, thank you for reminding me on that, that on the south side of that property, if that's going to be a privacy fence, I think they're in good shape. If that's going to be a chain link fence, they may need a few more feet of buffer area.
Buffer width.
But again, that's something we can certainly handle administratively if this should be approved, so, but yeah.
So, and then there is a stormwater detention pond in this area as well that will need a structural engineer design. It's, because of the tightness of the area, you know, they've got to stay 25 feet away from their septic system, which is this hatch pattern over here, so they're proposing to use concrete walls, and it's going to be pretty deep. It's seven and a half foot deep. They do propose a fence around the top of it. If I could find that detail. Might be the other way. But I think it is the other way. So that's going to need a structural engineer, something that tall. We'll need to make sure it's designed adequately. Here we go. So here's kind of a cross-section of it, and I'll try to zoom in a little bit. So it's proposing to be, to the top of the pond, to the bottom of the pond, is going to be seven and a half feet tall. The, there's going to be an outlet pipe through one of the walls on the, I guess, southeast side, but this will be a permanent pool in here for our water quality requirements, and then it'll have a fence on top because of the height and holding water, just for a safety factor, but that'll need to be designed before, by a structural engineer, you know, the concrete, the rebar, and everything that goes along with it, the foundations and whatnot. So, and then clarification of that loading dock, like I said, these are just fine tuning. Most of them are building permit issues, so other than that, we thought it was in pretty good order.
Like you said a lot, are you guys okay with approving the site plan with all the comments that you made?
Yes, sir. Right. Like, like I said, the, we just need to know what's going on inside. Before, there was not a door at the top of this loading dock. It's a four-foot tall loading dock to be able, for semis to back up and unload their cargo. A, you know, they'll need a ramp, or excuse me, a rail on this side to prevent anybody from falling, and then we just need to know what's going on inside, because the top of the dock is a lot higher than the finished floor that they're proposing. What's going on inside at a different elevation? And that's, like I said, that's fine tuning. Building codes can work with them on that, with their plans review.
They can't start construction until those comments have been met?
Well, they can't start vertical construction. They can start, once y'all approve the plan, we can okay the site plan for the site work, grading, and prep work like that, and then they'll, before they go vertical, they'll have to get their building permits with the building codes department.
Very good.
Now, this is close to residential area. It's going to, but it will, I worry about safety of children that are curious. It will be fenced in totally, correct?
It'll have two fences, actually. It'll have a fence around the perimeter and then a fence around the detention pond as well.
Should it be without?
It should, yeah, they, yes. But like I said, there is a subdivision to the north, there's a church kind of to the southeast here, and these two parcels are what the site plan that you're reviewing. And this is Old Nashville Highway, just right here to the southwest of the site.
Sir.
Doug, this was a well-established business when the zoning was changed and just continuing operation, right? Just expanding?
Basically. Like I said, the original building on the, on the first, you can see it, it's been there for quite some time, and when we redid the ordinance back in 2013, we rezoned that property to commercial services. The next year, they asked for the adjacent property to be zoned commercial service, so basically, yeah, it's expanding. Like I said, it's going to be two separate properties, but in essence, it's going to operate as one.
Okay. All right. I'd make a motion to approve with staff comments.
Thank you, David. We have a motion.
Second.
I'll second.
And a second. Any other questions or comments? Once again, we have a motion and a second to approve item 21-3001, Advanced Lawn Solutions. Call or roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Cusch.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. No old business?
Yes, sir.
Gets us into our staff reports, and Doug, it's all yours.
Thank you, sir. Yes, we made up for the lack of Platts and Plans today with lots of staff reports. I'll try to make these as brief as possible, but some of these will require some discussion. On your iPads, or if you're at home on the SharePoint, you'll see, first thing I want to talk about is the 2020 year-end report. What I've done here is I've included our available lot inventory that we've been keeping up with. I present this chart, and, well, not so much a chart, but the table, if you will, from the subdivision Platts and everything, to our Public Works Committee every month just for their information, but this is a year-end report, basically where we are currently as far as the number of lots. And at the end of the actual table, you'll see a chart that actually is tracking the total available lots. Now, these are the recorded ones. I don't keep up a chart with the, with those that aren't recorded, although that would be easy to do if that's something that you guys would like to see. But we started keeping track of this back in January 2009, and you can see on that chart that, since we've been tracking this at least, the high point of available lots, and again, those are lots that are recorded, on the ground, ready for building permits, the high reached about 1,688, and that was in January, well, 2009, 2010 timeframe during the recession. But then you can see a pretty consistent trend downward till somewhere between 2016 and 2017, where we bottomed out, so to speak, at 548, and then from then, it kind of, just kind of meandered around the 600 to 700 range and started going up and then started coming back down again, and right now, as of December, we are at 902 available lots. Now, Tanya does a similar report as far as building permit activity, which she could probably give you a little bit more information on. Building permit activity has remained strong. We've seen a lot more of the larger sections moving forward, Platts being recorded and everything, so it's not that there's just a huge amount of surplus lots out there, it's just, we're just seeing more and more activity. So that's just kind of give you an idea of what the building activity looks like. We also track the number of lots recorded for four lots or greater. The reason we do four lots or greater, the reason behind that was originally, we considered three lots or less a minor plat, four lots or greater, a major plat under our older regulations. Of course, when we changed to our current subdivision regulations, it became more of a function of what improvements are they doing versus the number of lots. So you could have a 10-lot subdivision that was a minor if they weren't doing any kind of infrastructure improvements or anything like that. So what you see on that is just tracking the, again, the total number of lots for four lots or greater subdivisions. You can see naturally that this past year, 2020, with the pandemic and everything, I wasn't overly surprised to see a drop in the number of the larger lots, especially for those first few months of the pandemic. We really did see a slowdown as far as the Platts and plans being reviewed are concerned, but that's picked up. I anticipate that, at the very least, staying steady, if not increasing, for calendar year 2021. And our rezoning applications, as you can see, last year, we processed, now, not all of these came before you, but we did process 30 rezoning applications. There were some that were submitted that never saw the light of day and just kind of died on the vine, so to speak, but the vast majority of them did come before you. Several of them came more than once, you know, we've had multiple public hearings on some of these, but that just kind of gives you an idea of our building, or rezoning activity. And then you'll see the final chart, the BZA cases, Board of Zoning Appeals for the last, since 2009, and you can see a kind of a trend downward in a number of cases. The big reason for the trend downward is some of the regulation changes that we've made over the years, specifically when it comes to some regulations that we changed for administrative approvals on, like temporary firework stands and things like that, that have been approved in the past and are just coming back for the same location, same parameter, same everything. We added some, some regulations into the zoning that allowed them to approve administratively, which took the caseload down on the BZA, and we'll talk about a couple more today that might have that same effect here briefly. But that just kind of gives you an overview of the building, not so much building, but plat activity, rezonings, BZA, for our office in calendar year 2020. So I'm more than happy to take questions if you don't have any now, but think of some after the fact, just feel free to give me a shout at the office, be more than happy to talk with you about, about any of that. So I'll just open up, see if there's any questions on that. If not, we'll go ahead and we'll jump into some of the potential zoning ordinance amendments. I've listed out four different things I'd like to talk about, and there is, on your iPads or on the SharePoint, if you're at home, you can kind of follow along with some of the amendments that we're going to be talking about. The first one is on accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, mother-in-law apartments, whatever you want to call those. Currently, we, we have two tiers of these, if you will. We have those that are allowed by right if they meet certain criteria, and we have, if they don't meet certain criteria, then they have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception. Specifically, what we want to look at here are a couple of things dealing primarily with attached ADUs, but before I get into that, there is one, when you look at the potential amendments on your iPads, under 2C, talking about how an ADU is designed to maintain the architectural design style appearance. Truthfully, the way we, we're not overly picky, the way we handle this as staff, so we thought a better idea maybe to kind of loosen this up just a little bit, instead of saying, designed to maintain, you know, that could mean, does it have to have the same roof lines, does it have to have the same color, same siding, whatever? We just thought it might be better to loosen it up a little bit to be compatible with the design style appearance of the principal residence. This isn't even so much an issue when it comes to attached ADUs, because a lot of the times that they're making an addition to the house, or changing something in the house, they're really not making any exterior modifications. So we've proposed a little bit of a change to that, and then also provided a little bit of squishy language, if you will. Alternative exterior architectural characteristics can be approved by the planning director. You know, if we feel, myself or my designated alternative could feel that it does meet the intent of the ordinance, we'd be able to do that. Again, that's not something we really put a whole lot of emphasis on, so it's something we just thought might be better if we just kind of loosen that up a little bit. The big issue we look at as far as attached ADUs is if the area totaling the ADU is less than 25% of the gross floor area of the house, excluding the garage utility space, it can be a by right, provided it meets all the other criteria. What we're proposing to do is bump that up to 50%, and then allowing the inclusion of garage utility space in that calculation. We've run into a few situations over the years that had to go to the BZA when, in truth, there was, as staff, we really didn't have any problem with it. It was just a situation where it did not meet the letter of that, of the ordinance. So we thought that if we just upped it to 50%, again, you still have a principal unit and an accessory unit at that point, and that should solve the problem, and hopefully, we don't get just a whole lot of those that go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Over the last, I'd say, since the new ordinance took effect, we've had about 10 accessory dwelling units attached that have had to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals because of a variance to this particular provision. So that was one particular item that we want to possibly change. I don't know how you want me to do this, Mr. Chairman, maybe you just want me to go through all these, or just kind of take them one by one?
Take them one at a time, unless, unless ask for questions.
Then that's pretty much it for that particular.
Comments?
I don't, I don't have any issues with the ADUs. If you were looking for a motion to approve the language, I'm okay for that.
Well, at this, these are going to be zoning ordinance amendments that we'll be talking about, so they'll have to come back before you for a public hearing and into the Board of Commissioners for their final approval. So if you're okay with us moving them forward, we can just go ahead and do that, but we can't, we can't approve them today. This is really more of a informational.
Gotcha.
For you.
All right.
And if there's questions or not, I mean, you know, obviously, if there's something you want us to look more into, we can do that.
Let's just go through them all, and at the end of it, we'll ask for a motion to move forward with it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Our second item is regarding major home-based businesses. And I will say this, of all these regulations we'll be talking about, they've served us well to this point, and I think they are serving us well today, currently. Just sometimes, as we go about our everyday enforcement of the ordinance, these are things that we see that might need to be tweaked. So the things we're talking about, again, we're not, we're not so much concerned with how they're functioning overall, we just think that they might be able to work a little bit better. Home-based businesses, and these are specifically dealing with major home-based businesses, these are ones that already have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for public hearings. Major home-based businesses right now are limited to three non-residential employees, the parking of no more than two business vehicles on the property, and then also have a limit to the number of client customer visits at any one time on the property or during the day. What we're proposing to do is, rather than actually have a hard limit on those for major home-based businesses, again, the minors, we wouldn't change any, what we're proposing to do is, kind of like we have done with Item C on that, where we talk about businesses not being able to use more than 500 square feet of accessory space, approved accessory structure space, but they are allowed to be approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals for more. The way we have this structured right now, you have to ask for variances if there's more employees, like if they had four instead of three, or if they wanted to park three vehicles instead of two, they would have to ask for a variance to that provision. What we're proposing to do is just change the language a little bit to act more like Item C does, where it says, basically, on a case-by-case basis, the Board of Zoning Appeals can look at this and say, "Okay, you've got four employees instead of three, we'll take a look at the totality of the circumstances. Okay, that's probably not that big of a deal." Or if you're going to have three vehicles, "Well, you've got 50 acres of land, no one's going to matter." "Oh, you only have an acre of land?" That might be a problem. Gives them a little bit more leeway in that regard. So what our proposal would be to just change, again, the language around, just to give the board a little bit more flexibility in how they approve things, rather than applicant having asked for a variance, they would be able to, the board would be able to do it just as part of their special exception deliberation.
Has this been an issue, Doug?
It's been an issue in the sense that there have been a few home-based businesses that have had to have variances to some of these provisions. There haven't been many. There have been a few, but it was enough. We dealt with one just a couple of months back, and after we got to talking about it, we looked at the language and said, "Well, you know, if we just changed the language a little bit, this would give the BZA that latitude to make that kind of approval without having asked for a variance." Again, they would still have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, we're not changing any of that. So the board would still be able to look at it and say, "We don't think that this is a good idea," or "We do think this is a good idea." So either way, we just think this language works a little bit better.
Doug, Mike Kush, will this just affect new applications, or will existing be grandfathered in?
Well, the existing ones had already been approved, so this would, this would apply to anything going forward. If they've already been approved with certain variances to those provisions that were in existence at the time they were approved, they would still continue. So I guess in a sense, they would be grandfathered in.
So yeah, this, this won't rescind any existing approval?
That is correct, it will not.
Doug, monkey rant type of question. A lot of folks are working from home this year. This has nothing to do with any of that.
No, sir. Most of the, I mean, we talk about a home-based business, you know, we're talking with people who are running a business out of their home, not necessarily those who telecommute. This, this isn't really addressing that. Most of the, I mean, like you said, people are doing out all over the place, we have no issue with that. So that's, this would not apply to any of that.
Move along.
There's no other questions on that. The next is an item that, and I'm going to ask for Tanya for a little bit of help on this one. This is allowing temporary portable containers as accessory structures. When I say temporary portable containers, kind of in your mind, think about the, those pod containers, if you will, where you call up and they drop the, you know, the pod off, you fill it up, and then they come take it away. We have had some situations in the past where people have started using these, excuse me, as just accessory structures on their property. You know, they probably don't get a building permit for them, most of them don't realize they would have to have one, so that happens. But rather than get a, like a stick-built building, or a Dutch barn, or something like that, what they're doing is pulling in these, these Conex structures, if you will, and putting them on the property and just using them as accessory items, accessory structures. You can see the regulations, I included just our existing regulations on this. We approved these several, this is even before the new ordinance took effect, because when the pods were first becoming kind of a big thing, we knew we needed to kind of get ahead of it. We kind of make a definition of what it is, and then in a residential zone, you can have one on the property, but no longer than 60 days, and then one permit extension for no more than 60 days can be granted by the planning director or my designee. And then we have some setback provisions for those as well. Again, these are supposed to be temporary. We have had a recent situation where somebody put one on a piece of property, and they're working through the zoning enforcement, we're working on through enforcement channels right now. There are possibly some ways to, to rectify the situation, but we just wanted to at least bring it to your attention, just to see if there was any changes you might be interested in making or comfortable making. If you're not, that's fine, we'll just pass that along. If you are, we can look into it a little bit more. But that's kind of what the, kind of the impetus of this was, and Tanya, if you had any further comments on that beyond what I've already said, feel free to jump in.
I do. The reason, this has come up several times in the last, I would say, in the last couple of years, it's become frequent that we've had zoning enforcement cases, we've had complaints about people particularly shipping containers being placed in a backyard and being used as accessory dwellings, or, excuse me, accessory buildings and storage buildings. So when we went to the zoning ordinance, this is all we could find, was where it addressed the pod-like containers, where people have them parked in their driveway, when they're in the midst of a move or a remodel or something like that, it addressed those, but it didn't address anything as far as shipping containers were concerned. So that's, our idea behind this was to get some clarification on whether you all would be interested in, in clarifying this a little bit, in addressing specifically shipping containers.
Personally, I don't have a problem with shipping containers if they're temporary. When someone leaves one there as a permanent structure, that's probably where I, as a neighbor, would have an issue with that.
And that's where we're having an issue. They, they're inexpensive, they're not as, you know, they can pick them up now for a few thousand dollars, and, and they use them as a, as a storage container, a permanent storage container. And we're having a hard time, once they're in there, we're having a hard time getting them out of there. It's, it's too expensive and difficult to get them out of there.
This regulation, this language take care of that?
Well, this language addresses what she, what we're talking about right now, because now, we don't want to allow them to be temporary. I guess what we're wondering is, is there any appetite in any circumstance to allow them to be permanent? Like maybe if it's on acreage property, you know, five acres or greater, or something like that. I mean, those are just ideas that Tanya and I have kind of kicked around a little bit. If you're okay with it the way it is, then we just leave it the way it is and move on. You know, that's, that's not a problem, but we did want to at least bring it to your attention, this is something that we've been dealing with.
Do the specific word "shipping container" need to be included?
Well, the way we define a portable structure, at least in these regulations, "Any structure enclosed by walls and a roof designed to be transported on its own wheels, or a flatbed truck or trailer and delivered to a site ready for occupancy or used for temporary purposes." I mean, I think that pretty much covers what a shipping container is. I don't think we need to necessarily clarify that. I think what we're curious about is, are you, are you interested in looking at ways to make, allow them to be permanent structures as opposed to just temporary structures? And again, if you're not, that's fine, we just, we're just looking for some direction, is really all we're doing.
And Doug, I know in the past, we have put a structured roof on, on the shipping containers and a pitched roof with signals to match the house that would allow them to stay as permanent.
Okay. Tanya, did you want to talk about that at all, as far as what?
I have not used that, that scenario recently, at all.
I couldn't remember if that was anywhere in our zoning regulations, where it had matched the existing structures or not.
Now, there's nothing in our existing zoning that allows for that right now. I do seem to recall some situations like that in the past, David, when you were, when you were the director, but I know those were few and far between, but I do recall something like that.
Okay. Well, I know we definitely got a lot of complaints when they were moved in just as shipping container storage and used as permanent storage on a property. The idea of agriculture use that may play into it, where we could have some kind of wording on acreage agriculture use?
Well, yeah, and for agricultural use, they're pretty much exempt from our zoning regulations anyway. And we have run into that from time to time, where someone puts one on a property for hay storage or something like that.
Right.
And we've not, we've allowed them to do that, because we really have nothing in our code that would prohibit that. Even if we did, they'd be exempt, so there's no point. So we have let them be used as agricultural structures, but what we're talking more about are just general accessory structures for storage, not agricultural storage.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Does that circumvent this, the little wooden?
Little Dutch barn?
Yes, those are.
Those are okay, yeah.
Those are acceptable.
Yeah, those don't fall under this definition, yeah.
Do we have a minimum lot size? Because I know some of the subdivisions we have approved have very small lot sizes. Do we have a minimum lot size that you can even put one of these on?
Right now, no, because they're temporary. So we would expect, most of these are used for situations like if someone's moving or renovating or something like that. They may be in a driveway for a month or so, and then they're gone. But as far as a minimum size, we don't, we don't have anything like that for these now.
There's a lot of conversation, I think, in the past about remodeling, someone is doing a major remodeling and they're moving out, so they have these structures there on a temporary basis, and that's what it's designed for.
That's true.
Also, we talked about storm damage and those kinds of things too in the past, where someone needs to haul something in to store stuff in while their home is being repaired from storm damage. All of that's covered in, under here.
Correct, yes. I mean, I don't go into as much as to why it's there, other than the fact it's allowed to be there for temporary purposes for these amount of days. We don't get into the reasoning so much.
Doug, question, Mike Kush here. On, on those two examples that you and Jeff just mentioned, so do I, if this is, do I have to go and get a permit to put one of these on my property temporarily for to store furniture due to water damage, or because I'm remodeling my living room and I need to store stuff for, you know, 30 days? Do I have to go and get a permit? Is that how I read this?
No. We don't require a permit for someone to put one of these on their property temporarily, and then they're moved. It's just, if somebody were to call and say, "Hey, somebody just put a structure in their front driveway," are they allowed to do that? And if we were to talk to that person, "Well, yeah, I'm just doing some renovation," and da-da-da, they'll need a permit for whatever renovation work probably that they're doing. They would have to check with codes to make sure they're okay there. But we don't issue zoning compliance forms for somebody, or, and Tanya, correct me if I'm wrong, you don't issue a building permit for, for anybody that just wants to put one in their driveway temporarily. It's just, it's, it's allowed, but we don't regulate it as far as permitting.
Move along.
Okay. The last one I want to talk about, and this, as you recall, came as a result of some discussion we had on a subdivision preliminary plan that was submitted, I believe that was at our December meeting, where we talked about the existing regulations on allowing bulk regulations for RM in the RL zone. I've included those regulations on your iPads or on the SharePoint for you to look at. You remember the discussion that we were having was what constituted domestic, I'm sorry, not domestic, but adequate fire protection in that particular meeting? And at the meeting, I said, you know, "We've always interpreted that verse to say, 'Fire hydrants is what is considered adequate fire protection.'" Of course, the wording of that was, could have been disputed, you know, reasonable minds could differ as to far, as far as what that meant, although we did enforce it in a certain way. So we had talked at that meeting about the possibility of us coming up with some language to bring forward to you, just for you to take a look at. And again, this is, you know, we're not approving anything tonight, just to, or today, or rather, just to take a look at this. But what you can see, and that particular item, you know, "Adquate water services available for domestic service as determined by the water provider and fire protection as determined by the fire chief." What we've done on the proposed language is kind of changed that water, language around just a little bit. Excuse me, it says, "Water lines serving the proposed development can support both domestic service and fire hydrants throughout the development, or through off-site improvements can be made to provide such support. These determinations shall be made by the water provider in consultation with the fire chief, and if necessary." So that was what, kind of like our first stab at, at looking at this. So we just wanted to at least put it out there. This may be something for a larger discussion, more than maybe we want to do right now, but this is just something at least to get the conversation started. So I'll be happy to answer any questions or hear your thoughts on that. And in addition to that, you'll see under the, in the first one of the proposed language, just thought, change that, just tweak that just a little bit, rather than "as determined by the sewer provider," just change that to "the service provider." I mean, that, that's really just more of the terminology change, nothing, that's not a major change in how we do anything, just thought it was a better way to word that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm the one that I think probably spearheaded this discussion from the December meeting, and my thing there was just making sure that there is distinguishable enough between the RL and RM when it comes to water protection, that there's no ambiguity that we're able to distinguish in, in a wording. We know we've, you know, pretty much made a stance in the past about what we've consistently tried to do in that situation. I just think it'd be better if we had something more clear in writing to facilitate that discussion and we have these come up again. So I think it's a first, first stab's good. You know, as long as the water provider and the chief are in understanding of what we're trying to ask, then I'm okay with that. But if there's something else, it'll be a little bit better, I'm good with that as well. I just want it to be clear in our regulations, so we don't have that ambiguity anymore.
It's a good comment, Chip. Does this language cover your concerns?
Yes, sir, I think it, I think it does. You know, I really don't have anything other that I would add at the moment, or maybe after we get done with our meeting today and I think about it a little bit more, but just on the, off the cuff, I think it's, I think it's in line with what I'm looking for.
Would this make it easier, Doug, for you? It gives us a little bit more, at least, direction when it comes to making those decisions?
I think so. I mean, it's, and I'll be the first to admit, when we came up with the language originally, I think it met the intent, maybe wasn't spelled out as well as it should have been, but this is what we had in mind, you know, clarifying that a little bit, at least at this point, there'd be no, there'd be no way where someone comes and say, "Well, I think sprinklers would be adequate based on the way the language is written." You know, that, that situation would not come up with the way this is worded.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make it easier for Doug and him to be able to make that distinction, and we not have to worry about that when it comes before planning, that they can, you know, share that, you know, clearly to the, to the applicant, and we don't have to worry about this coming to us, because it'll all be worked out on the front end.
This is one of those items we move forward. There's plenty of time to make tweaks to this or additional changes and give you an opportunity to look at that, Chip, okay?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
Jim, over water, I have a comment, please.
Yes, Jim.
I'm good with the, the direction we're trying to go with this. I think my concern is going to be, though, at what point does it become unreasonable for, to ask, what is the tipping point to ask of someone? I mean, is $30 million unreasonable to do a 20-home neighborhood, $30 million improvement? I mean, you know, I suppose the, the water provider could ask just about anything of a person and pretty much have them held up and where they can't do anything with their property. And I don't really know how to address that, but I think it's something that we need to think seriously about.
Good comment. Lee?
This water service, to me, goes back to similarity between roadway improvements and signals. If you have one subdivision proposed and there's an eight-inch water line, and then you make a determination of whether that hydrant could be supported, or if it needs to be sprinklers, you can't catch them all, but I'm thinking, when I read through this, if you have multiple developments coming in, it's much like the road improvements. If all of a sudden that line gets changed to a 12-inch line, then does that original one, if they're still in process, need to go back through and they, and they start to coordinate those kind of things? But they may have an approval for sprinklers, does that all of a sudden kick that back over to a hydrant? So I know those are things you can't always anticipate, all of those, but that language of coordination may be something that may need to be explored, just, just for the chances that we know multiple subdivisions are, like 231 corridor and the 269 area, those, those areas that are booming.
Right.
That we may need to facilitate that coordination. That we may need to facilitate that coordination, but I don't know how to begin to write that in the language to do that. You guys do a great job of catching those things, but that's where I see that, you know, I can't meet the requirements here because the water line is this. But if there's two other developments coming in at that same time, then all of those together may meet that.
Right. And, yes, I think it would function a lot the same way as, like you said, like a road improvement or a traffic signal or something like that. Now, it does require coordination amongst all the parties, which that's hard to legislate.
And I think this is a good start here. I like what's written here, and I think, especially the off-site improvement part, so we're not just looking at the subdivision in an isolated manner, that we're looking at, okay, those off-site improvements. And that'll come into play with those other developments that...
Right. And I would want to make, I just want to make sure we're all clear. We're not saying if they weren't able to meet, even if we pass this language, we're not sitting, we're not trying to say they can't develop the property. All we're saying is in the RL zone, if you want to qualify for the RM density, you know, the three units per acre versus one unit per acre, this is what you have to meet. If they don't meet it, they can still develop as an RL density, they just won't get as many lots. So, we're not telling them they just can't develop, period. They're just not going to get the yield that they want to out of it. That's really what we're trying to say here.
Doug, would you feel more comfortable if we just took that language out? That they wanted to go to 22,000 square feet lot sizes, that they would have to request a zoning order change to where they had to go to RM?
Well, and that's another way to handle it. If you guys were more comfortable saying, we're just not going to approve it if you want to go down to the, to an RM density, ask for an RM zone. Now, I think that kind of gets into the larger issue of, are we more concerned with the amount of density it's getting? If we're concerned with the amount of density in the RL zone, why are we allowing them to resort to RM to do the same thing? You know what I mean? So, I think that's something that needs to, that's a discussion that needs to be had as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You know, this falls back to a period of time, I think, when I first come on as a planning commissioner here. I can remember property on the outer edges of this county that people would come in here wanting to develop. And I can remember Will Jordan standing up here and saying, that's too far out there. That's way out there. There's no way it can be serviced in what we can do. And I was sort of offended because I was way out there. And, but he was right in what we had to do as far as the infrastructure is concerned and how we service what we're wanting to develop. But as we continue to grow, way out there is no longer way out there. We're becoming closer and closer and closer as a citizenry within this county. But yet, a lot of our infrastructure is not way out there. When we started talking about that one particular development that we are mentioning here back in December, all the way out on 41A, I remember when I first started campaigning out there, I went and knocked on houses out there that says, we've never had a candidate knock on our door before from Rutherford County. I said, we didn't realize for years we were still in Rutherford County. And said, we're glad to see you. And, you know, I thought, you know, I feel like I'm one of the little house on the prairie people knocking on the door out here. But yet, when you talk about this and the services that we're still trying to provide, and you're talking about an eight-inch line compared to a six-inch line, and our attempts within this county to get water, simple water to where we got to go. I can remember back in 1998, when I built my home out there where I'm at now, presently on the farm, exactly one mile from my house were my parents that didn't have CUD water. And they were coming to my house, filling up jugs, taking it back to their house down there. And that was 1998. Well, water's down there now, but yet there are other places still that doesn't, you know, they're still trying to deal with this. But you take this right here and what we're trying to do right here, we're still looking at properties that, this is still a good question, and we still have to do our due diligence to make sure that for we place developments within these places, it's got to be right. Exactly one half mile from this development on Christmas Eve, a house burned up. And guess what? It wasn't on that road, it was out there on Highway 41A. There was mutual aid called by the Eagleville Fire Department for water. There wasn't enough water to put out one single house. And we had to send tankers from the county fire departments out there to put out that fire. So, it depends, you know, exactly where you are and where you're stopped and what you've got to deal with. So, you know, we can look at paperwork and saying, hey, we've done all of this, but we got to make sure it's there. And I think it's not only that end of the county, I think it's all the way around the edges of this county and what we've got and where we're going and how we provide with it. And we're talking about water here. Someday, it'll become so important, I think that we'll fit into these regulations right here broadband, because it'll have something to do with that too. And right now, we are in broadband where we were with water at one time and where it's at and where we go. Thank you, Pettis. Any other comments? I think to move forward to this, I think most of us are confident that something needs to be done, but it could also require some additional tweaking.
That's fine.
Chip and Jim, you can think that thing through, and when we get ready to put this before a public hearing, it can be tweaked, okay?
And let me just kind of propose this. It seemed like, as far as these four items that we discussed today, there was pretty broad consensus, I think, on the first two, the ADUs and the major home-based businesses. I'd be okay moving those two forward. The temporary portable containers and then this item here with the fire protection, I probably would say, let's let those kind of cook a little longer before moving those forward, if everybody's okay with that direction on that. That would allow us a little more opportunity to discuss those two before moving them forward, if that's, if everybody's okay with that.
The temporary portable containers, does anyone have an issue with that?
Or do we just need to leave it? I mean, we didn't really have anything to move forward regulation-wise. If you just wanted to leave it alone, we could just leave it alone. So, I mean, I guess if that's the consensus on that one, then we'll just take that one off the list.
Doug, on the home-based business, where you say you can only have 10 clients a day? So, if a guy's got a barber shop, is that what we're saying, he can only have 10 clients a day?
Basically, yeah.
Can he go to BZA and get, if there's a problem?
Well, that's what this, that's what this would cover. Right now, at the Board of Zoning Appeals, they are limited to 10. They could say, well, sometimes I'll have 12, and the BZA could say, okay, you can have 12. Rather than having to ask for a variance, it'll just be a part of their special exception approval. So, yeah.
Move forward with one, two, and leave three the way it is, and have more discussion and more thought on four before we bring it for a public hearing.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Chairman, I, just Chip, again, real quick, I do agree with Jim. I don't want to make it any harder for people to do, you know, what they want to do with their land as far as it meets, you know, our regulations. So, yeah, we start all that dollars, that does, you know, concern me a little bit as well. So, I do concur with Jim on that point, but I do think we're heading in the right direction. I would prefer some time to settle on this and think about it before we go too much further. So, thanks, Jim.
Very good.
That's what we'll do.
Okay.
All right. If there's no other comments on that, the last item that we'd like to do today is...
Before we go, let's just say, one, two, and three, leave three the way it is, move one and two forward. Just without any exception to that, we'll just say that we'll move forward with those.
Very good. Thank you for providing the feedback on that. Something else we're hoping to get your feedback on, again, this is the last item we have on our agenda today, and I will try to make this as brief as possible, but we do think that this is something that does need some discussion, is our presentation on planned developments. First of all, I will say, I like our regulations that we have for planned developments. I do think that they are working as they were intended to work, but like anything, after we've had these regulations in effect, and these actually, these regulations predated the current ordinance that we're in. We actually updated these when we were under the previous zoning resolution. So, when we brought these over into the new code, we really just had to tweak it for sections and different things as far as where to find different things in the new ordinance. So, the regulations themselves, beyond the open space requirement, pretty much remain the way they were even before the new ordinance took effect. But what we want to do, especially when we get to these smaller lots, and Mr. Whitworth, you kind of mentioned that a little bit earlier, minimum sizes and different things like that, some of the issues that we're starting to see with planned developments and smaller lots and everything. And I will say that Jason Laxton is here from CUD to kind of give his take. We have Greg Brooks here from the Highway Department also to give his take on some things, if you'd be interested to hear what they have to say. But Mike, go ahead and start, or if you want me to, I can...
Yeah.
The first few slides that we have here, and this is also on your iPads, I included this on your iPads as well, just for your, let's see. Are you able to just? Okay, here we go. Okay. We just, obviously, there's been several developments that we've approved over the last several years. We just wanted to kind of get a, just a broad overview of some of them, so we didn't go to every single development or anything like that. The first few lots that you're going to see are from South Haven. And this is kind of what you see, this is an overview, this is the aerial photo with the plat map situated on top of it. And you can see just the size of the houses on these lots, where the house themselves, and you know, that seems to be the trend, smaller lots, try to maximize the house as much as you can on those lots. So, that just kind of gives you an idea of what that looks like from an aerial perspective. But what we wanted to do is kind of give you an idea, when you say a 55-foot wide lot, what does that look like exactly when you have other houses around it? And you can see now, these measurements that are taken, now, these aren't going to be, you know, these aren't, you know, survey accurate by any means. This just kind of gives you a rough idea of what you're going to be looking at in some of these. This is what you would see for a 55-foot wide lot. Again, it's another example of a 55-foot wide lot, and then 40-foot, roughly 40-foot from the property line. Again, not survey accurate, but it gives you an idea of what you're looking at. 60-foot wide, this is a little bit, a little bit wider lot. You can see, you can tell there's a little bit more space between adjacent houses on a 60-foot wide lot. Back to a 55-foot wide, again, just kind of giving you an idea of what that, what that looks like, another 55-foot. And again, this is that same, actually, you know, am I going the wrong way? Oh, I'm going, I'm sorry, excuse me. I was going the wrong way. So, 65, okay, so now we get into South Haven, this is the second part of South Haven, so I'm sorry, I was hitting the wrong button. Again, this kind of gives you an overview of how it looks from an aerial perspective when you've got the plat superimposed over the aerial photo. Now, again, you know, you're, these property lines probably aren't exact where they are because of the, you know, the aerial photos are always a little bit skewed when you're looking at that. But these are starting to get into a little bit wider lots. You know, you've got 65-foot wide here, so you're still seeing pretty good-sized houses on these lots. Another example of a 65-foot. Some of these didn't have any adjacent to them, but you can see it's a 75-foot, and again, a little bit wider even there, another 75-foot wide example. Retreat at Pinnacle Hills, this is one, it's off of Thompson Road over in the Rockville area. Again, we're going back to 65-foot wide, you can see a little more space in between these. This one's a little skewed, sorry about that, but this is 70-foot, you can still see some space there. Clear Creek, this is over there off of Alma Ville Road. These lots were actually a little larger, these were a minimum of 10,000 square feet. So, these are going to have wider lots. As you can see, this is an 85-foot wide lot right here. This one's 90. You can kind of see the drive right there. You have the ability there to have a side entry garage, with some of these other lots, you almost, you can almost only do front entry. Same here, 100-foot wide, over 100-foot. And I think that's just another example of how you see the larger homes on these, on these lots here. Now, some of the issues we've been having, and Mike, this is maybe where you want to take over for this, for these next picks. When you see these big houses on these smaller lots, especially when you get into these backyard areas, and I know Mike gets into these discussions a lot, the drainage easements in the back really minimizes the amount of backyard that you have. Mike, I'll let you go through some of these.
That's, this is kind of what we're up against. And what Doug was talking about, showing the aerial imagery with the plat, the lot line superimposed, this is kind of a, you know, a side view of the back of the house. That's actually a drainage easement with a porch and steps built into the drainage easement. So, this is probably at a top of a hill, so it's not that critical, but, you know, we're seeing this more and more, the smaller lots, the bigger houses taking up every inch of buildable space on that. And I don't want to steal Doug's thunder, but we get complaints all the time. I have no backyard. I have, where are my kids going to play? Where, you know, where am I going to keep my dog? You know, that's, and you know, people should know what they're buying, but this is what we experience all the time. And this is an issue that we're going to have to address, you know? How are we, how are we going to get in here and work on this? If this ditch needs to be cleaned out or anything like that, and you've got, you know, an added-on porch steps that came probably after the certificate of occupancy? You know, that happens a lot. Fences, you know, we, no more fences and easements, period. You know, that's, we used to make an exception for if it was a pipe system and you could show us that you could straddle the pipe and you're going, we're going to make you sign a waiver. Well, it just became too much of a hassle and we just, like, this is an easement that we need to be able to access, so no more fences allowed in our drainage easements. But this is, this is kind of something what we're dealing with, and I don't know if you want to take over? Okay. So, here's, here's another angle of that. That's, you know, you can actually see the flow line of that.
Mike, it looks like the roof line there comes out was...
Yes, yes.
Was initially, when it was all built, or does that look like maybe that was just, if the building codes was inspecting that, they wouldn't, they wouldn't allow that?
That wouldn't, that wouldn't fly. So, a lot of these are added on after the fact, you know, people move in...
Without a permit?
Yes.
Yeah. And I wanted to, yeah, I wanted to make that clear, that what we're looking at here, you know, obviously, our building codes inspectors and everything, I mean, they're doing their job, but like Mike said, a lot of the times, and some of these improvements, you can tell, some of the things were just added after the fact and probably never got the permit to begin with. And, you know, we, there's nothing we can do about that when it happens.
But here's, here's some more houses with the backyard, it's pretty much a drainage easement. Here's another one. This was like jaw-dropping right here. You step out of your house and this, you know, I'm not sure if that's not into the drainage easement. It might not be, but that might be the very edge of a drainage easement. And some time ago, we talked about the front of these houses and having enough depth for parking to prevent that on-street parking. So, now you're dealing with this size lot and you're squeezing up against these easements in the back to get enough room in the front. So, it's... Well, I mean, they're, the trend is for larger houses and smaller lots, you know, it's the bottom line. People are wanting these, these larger houses and, I mean, I don't know if people are buying houses sight unseen and moving in or just, you know, excited about the granite countertops and then they move in and look at the backyard and I'm like, huh, where, you know, where's Fido going to play and where's the kids going to play? But that's, you know, this is what we have to deal with.
And Mike, the one with, the one with the fence right there, all those fences right there, do you go back, do you go back and tell them to remove them? Well, you can't catch them all, I know that.
We can't, we can't catch them all. I mean, and this might be the edge where a drainage easement curves around, so I'm not sure. I didn't take these pictures, but, you know, you can kind of see this, this fence is straddling a ditch. That's going to catch leaves, debris, trash, whatever can be an issue. That's what we don't allow. We didn't permit that, I'm pretty sure. That's, that's not wanting, something that we would have allowed, but...
Is it not the owner responsible for keeping that drainage ditch clean?
Yes, yes.
In the picture back that you had just a second ago, looking down in there, it looks like there's a gate across the drainage ditch.
This picture?
Back up, back up, one with the blue. No, we're going the wrong way.
Other way, yeah, I think it was, I think I know which one.
Other way, yeah, I think it was, I think I know which one.
Right there, no, back up one.
That's back one.
Go forward.
Forward, yes.
I guess it's that one, you know, there's a gate across.
That's a fence, that's a wrought iron fence.
It crosses the easement.
Yes, sir, right. And that's something we would not allow, I mean, because, you know, it's going to block debris and whatnots.
Have a technical care department.
And, yes, yes, so, you know, and the long-term issue, yes, it's the homeowner's responsibility to maintain that ditch, mow it, shape it, whatnot, but what happens when Public Works has to get in here and work on that? They can't, they can't. Here's another one.
Isn't it written on the, here, somewhere that's not allowed?
Well, most deeds will say something to the effect of, you know, you're buying a piece of property as recorded in section blah, 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 subject to all zoning easements that are of record or something like that. I don't think most deeds will come right out and say, "You're not allowed to put anything into drainage easement, you're not allowed to put anything in there," I mean, they don't, they just say you're supposed to meet the zoning and whatever regulations are in effect for that lot. Now, like I said, a lot of people, and it's not, I mean, it's not just here, I mean, not even on smaller subdivision, but anywhere, a lot of times you just get people that may, don't know that they're not supposed to do that, and they just put up a fence, not even thinking anything about it, even in 15,000-square-foot subdivisions you see that. But in those situations, they just, some of them may not know, some of them may just are trying to maximize what backyard they have, especially on these smaller lots, that's where we're coming. And I'm not, I want to make sure that we're clear on this, that I'm not saying, and I don't think anybody here is saying we're just anti-small lots, it's just, this is what we're dealing with right now, and are there ways that we could still have smaller lots, but maybe not have so many of these issues, I guess is kind of what we're getting at. There's a few pics in here too, Mike, if you keep going, that I know Tanya's got some questions as well.
That's a telling one right there, I mean, these houses are built right up to the edge of a drainage easement, and then, you know, they're pushing that envelope to get a deck in there, to get their fence in there, and, you know, that's, a tight drainage easement has become even tighter. And this is a subdivision under construction, and you can see the decks creeping in after the houses are finished.
Okay, those are, Tanya, I think these are the ones that you've sent me about just some discussions you wanted to have on those. Can you see that over here?
So, there is no doubt about it. These smaller lots are presenting problems that Building Coach just hasn't had to deal with before. You know, we had larger lots where they put septic systems, and setbacks were never an issue for us. This particular one is, and I will say, as a result of these problems that continue to arise for us, we have been making changes and, you know, policy changes and introducing new things as it happens. For example, we now require a plot plan for every lot that is built on, we also require a surveyor's plot plan when the slab has been constructed, if it's tight, if we can't determine clearly where the property line is. And can you move on to three or Can you see the one with the backup one? Two, another one. Okay, see, this driveway straddles two pieces of property. When we got the plot plan for this, the house, the house wall was exactly 7.5 feet from the property line on both sides. You can see two slabs here. See the driveway in the middle, excuse me, in the front of the picture, it straddles both property lines, and that yellow tape that you see right there is the property marker. So you can see the one in another picture, you can see the one at the back, but we have no way of identifying, we know they've got 7.5 on each side, but we don't know where that center line is, so we don't know if one side's got seven and one side's got eight, or if they're, so it becomes, I just wanted to show this to you, that what looks good on paper, what you guys see on paper in black and white, when we get out there and everything starts to move vertical, it's a completely different story. Property lines are not defined, they're not clear. We are starting to slow them way down and go, okay, before we can approve this, we need a surveyor to come out here and mark these property lines, and, but that's all, that's all come as a result of issues and stuff that you've seen in these past pictures. Because when we're, when the yard's all neatly, and if you'll move on a couple of pictures?
Forward.
Yeah. That's the rear property line that we see. So what you've seen in those previous pictures was a nice manicured lawn and a ditch and stuff. We can't define, or we can't determine where that ditch is when we go out there to do this, is that a slab inspection? We have no idea where that slab, or, excuse me, where that drainage ditch is at the back, because everything's in such close proximity. I'm not, I'm not trying to justify anything, certainly, you know, we're all out there to do a job, I'm just saying it's not as easy as it appears to be.
There's a couple more things that we are planning, that we wanted to show you all, and this may be a, one of those that, it doesn't matter which one, just pick one, that maybe Jason Laxton at CUD might want to comment on. This is a plot plan right here, and CUD also requires plot plans for any lot that I believe has less than 80 feet width at the property line, I believe is what that is. And you can see, this is a 55, if I remember right, this is a 55-foot wide lot, this is a plot plan that you're seeing, and it's got, you know, seven and a half foot setbacks, so, I mean, everything fits on the property, but it pretty much fits exactly as it's shown right there. You know, because Tanya and I were talking, I said, well, when we're looking at this particular one, it looks like they've got a little more room on the, I guess that'd be the right-hand side as you're looking at it. I'm like, why can't they shift the house over just a little bit? They wouldn't have, you know, be sitting right on the line. He just goes, well, then they'd get into the CUD easement where the step tank is in the front, and when you're looking at the driveway, it's pretty much right on that septic, the step tank line, the easement line. So I'm like, yeah, that might make it a little more difficult. So if you had a little wider lot, that might give you a little more wiggle room there as far as getting the driveway and still having a little bit of wiggle room for the tank and all that. So that was also a concern. I see Greg kind of moving toward the front there, I didn't know if he wanted to make some comments as well, but, again, we're not, we're not trying to say that plan developments are bad, and that we're going to stop approving them or anything, but, or even entertaining them, but I just, we just think it's only fair that you know that, you know, they look really nice in the pattern book, but when it starts getting to the ground and actual vertical construction, especially when you're trying to maximize the size of the house on the lot within the building envelope that you have, these are the issues that we're running into.
Doug, you may have already answered my question, but you showed pictures of them moving into drainage easements. They are also encroaching on other easements such as CUD, what about the roadways, TVA, if that is applicable?
Yeah, I mean-
After the house is built, then we build a little structure and put it under, on one of those that, quote, "Not allowed," but we've got to catch them to do it?
Right, basically. If there's a structure, something is built, excuse me, in any easement, be it drainage, and like you said, TVA or anything like that, if there's a structure that's built after the fact that they never got a permit for, if they come in for a permit, we're going to catch a lot of that. You know, if they say, hey, I want to put an extension onto my house, we're going to say, well, you're going to be in a drainage easement, well, you're going to be over your setback, well, there's an electrical easement here, you need to stay out of it, you can't do that, and then be able to work with them on that. Unfortunately, what ends up happening is sometimes people just do the addition, and we never know one way or the other what has happened about it, so. But if we find out about it, if an issue comes up, like Mike was talking about, if there has to be some work in a drainage ditch, and they go out there to try to do some work and can't, yeah, then you have to start working with the property owner as far as how you address that situation.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Question from Mike, I guess. Mike, on these tight backyards, on the planned unit developments, and you know there's going to be substantial drainage, it could not go underground?
Yes, yes, the entire ditch, if it's an open ditch, has to fit within a drainage easement. Our standard easement width is 20 feet, but we have some deeper ditches that are, require even wider easements, so-
I mean, like, the drainage grates and pipe underground?
Well, we do have some-
And you don't have a problem with the ditch stopping up?
Yes, yes, we have some subdivisions, including South Haven, where there are a piped drainage network in the backyard. And, but still, I mean, do we, we want, do we want those encroachments into a piped drainage easement? So, I mean, if we ever have to work on it, we have to remove decks, we have to remove fences, we have to, you know, outbuildings, people will put these little sheds out there, I mean, it's-
Well, the only other choice that I see is make the lots bigger.
Yes, and that's kind of what I think Douglas is looking at, but if you look on the screen, that's, that picture tells a lot right there. I mean, you're squeezing every ounce, or every square inch of usable space is a building. I mean, it's, the driveways take up half the front yard, the CUD takes up the other half the front yard, and I'm, you know, I love nature, I love everything, but where are you going to put a tree out in the front yard? There's not room for that. I mean, that's, maybe people don't like trees in the front yards anymore, but that's something I see that is going to be lacking in these subdivisions. You might get a little shrub squeezed in there, but you won't, you won't get a nice, big, mature tree, but I'm-
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Rhonda.
Thank you. I'm curious, I like the direction that you're headed in, but I'm curious to know too, because, you know, a lot of this, we always say is market-driven, so if this is the product that the market is driving, my question is, do we need to add very explicit platinums that say, based on this plat as recorded, the following things are not permitted? There's no room for a fence, a deck, an accessory structure, you know, that way, at least buyer beware, when you see that, you know, I can't do the following things?
Yes, well-
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I can't tell you how many tears I've seen shed over this. I mean, people come in and just cry, you know, I have no room for my kids to play, my dog, you know, where are they going to play? You know, I want to tell them, you know what you bought, but you can't be that heartless sometimes.
Now, Rhonda, you're assuming that they even ask, or that they check, or that they read that?
Yeah, a lot of times people don't see the final plat.
That they're even educated enough to go look for it.
And it's hard to anticipate what size deck someone would want to build on that, because I was thinking about taking a lot size, and we have all the knowns of the CUD, the driveway, the standard template, and we say, this is the largest footprint house you can put on this lot. But even if you left a buffer space for a deck or something, you just don't know how large of one someone would want to build.
Well, and some of the discussion that we've had, and again, we don't, there's no, we don't have any specific recommendations at this point, but these were some things that we looked at, some potential alternatives, maybe calculating minimum lot size outside of any easements. In other words, if you're saying you're going to have a 7,000-square-foot lot, that's 7,000 square foot outside of the drainage easement, outside of the utility easements, anything like that.
And determine what size or footprint of house can be supported on that lot.
Right.
We say, this is the max that can be supported with all the easements and all the-
Right, which could get back to-
Utilities that are there.
Lot coverage. You know, most of these, and that was another suggestion, maximum lot coverage, most of these will have higher lot coverage. Normally, in your RM, RL zones, you're looking at like 20%, 25% lot coverage, and that's really not a big issue in those subdivisions. Even with a bigger house, you've got a 15,000-square-foot lot or larger, you're not going to have a problem with that, and we're only counting structures. On these smaller lots, that becomes more of an issue. You know, if you have a 6,000-square-foot lot and you want to build a 3,000-square-foot home, you know, the math doesn't work, you know. You know, kind of what Tanya was talking about, and this is something CUD already does, do we want to put a requirement on PUDs that you have to have a plot plan for any lot that's going to be less than 15,000 square feet in a PUD regardless of if it's a 10,000 or 6,000 square foot lot?
And when you mentioned that, did you say that the surveyor has to certify the locations as being correct of the building corners?
So currently in these PUDs with these small lots, before we even issue a permit, we require a plot plan, very similar to the one, in fact, not sometimes the actual plot plan that CUD requires. If the building, and it's good, it looks like the one that he just presented there where it said 7.5, and they had square foot, or, excuse me, the clearance, the setback was correct. However, when we get out there and we see something like this, the inspector measured from form to form, and it was exactly 15.2 inches. We know that the setback is 7.5. We also know that they're probably going to put a three-inch brick with a one-inch airspace on each side, so that's another eight inches. So we asked for a survey on this particular, we asked them to come out and identify where the property line was, and they also cannot put brick on this house now, because the setback was exact. They have to just smear the foundation wall, they're not going to be able to do anything with it, and these are $400,000 homes. And now they have to put hardy board, which was probably the plan anyway, but now they can't put brick on the foundation because the setback is so close. So if we get out there, and it's a challenge, and we can't definitively determine where that property line is and measure from that property line, then yes, we require them to have a surveyor come to the property, we hold up the foundation inspection, have a surveyor come out to the property and identify where the property lines are, so we can measure it.
Mr. Chairman, you know, we've continually heard on developments like this, is that the people that are coming now are wanting smaller places. I mean, that seems to be what I hear, times they want smaller places, less to take care of, but what I'm hearing here is that not really. They get here, and then all of a sudden they realize, hey, I want a backyard for the children, I want this. What that reminds me of, I was, I was part of Columbia, Tennessee, when Saturn arrived over there, and that's when the people come here from Detroit and places like that, and I had a house over there that had, oh, better than an acre, acre and a half, and we sold that. And I'll never forget that family that'd come from Detroit, and as they come to look at the house after they had bought it, and we were showing them around, there was a little girl with them, and as she walked and saw our backyard of what we had, she said, Mama, does this mean we can get a pig now? And they thought they had bought a farm. And I think, you know, as we, as Rutherford County, continue to grow, we'll continue to have people wanting to do this, and we're going to continue to see this, and if we don't do something now, I mean, we're going to continue to have these problems that you're talking about right here. And Doug, I think you're all in the right direction. I think, you know, we're going to either have to fix this, or we're going to have to say, you know, you've bought a very nice house on an apartment lot, I mean, really what it comes down to. And I think that's what we've got to look at.
Doug, do you have a recommendation, or would it be wise to take the discussion that we've had today and form a group that would include staffs, and would include our department heads, and someone from some of the architectural firms, and even the building community, and have some discussion over the next few months as to what we're seeing as a problem? I'll kind of go back always to, we're a planning commission, and if we don't like the plan, we ought to be able to say, we don't like that plan. But it also has to meet certain legal requirements, and we try our best to adhere to those. But I have a concern, and it's a long, long-term concern, about what our community is going to look like 50 years from now. And we've been into CUDs for a good long while now, what, Doug, 10 years or 12 years or something like that, and we've had a, we've got a history, and we need to make a determination whether we like what we're doing and want to make some changes to what we're doing. some changes to what we're doing. And I think that's up to us. But we also need a lot of input from people who are affected by it. So Doug, do you think it was that we put together a group, some type of ad hoc committee, if you want to call it that, to discuss this issue and see if there are some consensus that we can reach and some type of recommendation that as we move forward to, it doesn't have to be this month or next month, but it can be a long-term situation that we can, what I mean by long-term, several months, that we can take a look at it and see if there are potential alternatives. And I know you've got several that are reached here, but I think those can be discussed in detail. Does that make sense to us, some folks?
Personally, I like the idea. And again, you know, we weren't coming today to try to get, you know, say, hey, these are the things we need to be changed, and we're going to push them through next month. We know that this is, there's going to be more discussion. We've already mentioned this to some of the architectural, or engineering firms that work on plan developments, that we're starting to see these issues and that, you know, we're going to start talking about this. And so they're aware, and I think they would appreciate that being able to kind of put their feedback into the process as well. So, I mean, I think what we can do is kind of, maybe just kind of put our heads together as staff to see what this might look like as far as any kind of a committee, because we've done, I mean, it's been a while since we've had something like that here at the planning commission, but we can certainly put together something like that and then bring the recommendations back to you and say, okay, this is how we think this might want to work. And then kind of take it from there, see where it goes, but I think we could do that.
There's a lot of players that's involved in this, and if we can get the players involved in potential solutions, I think we would have crossed a major hurdle, built a bridge. So if you can, think about what the potential ad hoc committee would look like and potential players, and bring that back to this committee as soon as possible.
Will do.
Maybe even next month if you could, but if you need more time, take more time.
I think we'll be able to have at least a recommendation of what the process may look like next month.
You know, some of the things that were brought up, if I were a younger person buying a first home, I'm not sure I would look at that, you know, until I got in it and where is my dog going to run during the daytime? Or where is my kid's going to throw a baseball or a football or something? And I probably wouldn't think about those things. And after I got in it, you know, I would probably try to blame somebody else, and we're the ones that they're going to blame. So let's see if we can at least do something to make improvements for it. Also, look at some other surrounding counties that are high-growth counties and have PUDs and see if they're experiencing some of the same things and some possible solutions that they've come up with.
Sure.
That make sense to everybody?
Chairman Phillips, I wanted to add something else, if I may. We talked about the backyards, we talked about drainage easements, but also we need to think about the whole yard and the front setbacks as well. I was, read an article on getting rid of clutter in your house, and the article referenced a Department of Energy study, and that study said that 50% of the homes with two-car garages cannot park cars in there because of clutter, that people are putting stuff in their garages, not cars. And of the remaining 50%, half of those can only get one car in there. So these people are parking outside, they're parking on the street too. So we've got a 50-foot right away, but, you know, if you have a, you know, a family get-together, a party or whatnot, you know, you're parking on a narrow street too. So that's something else we need to look at as well. And I'm just throwing that out there as something of a topic of discussion, because not, just don't focus on the backyard because that's important, but the front yard as well.
I'm sorry, Mike, that was my understanding that we would look at all of it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Just make sure.
No, no, I'm not saying that you didn't say that, but I just, I'm just busting at the seams that this is something that we deal with on a continual basis, and we understand, you know, step systems have opened up a lot of developable area in Rutherford County because you can have a centralized sewage treatment facility for a subdivision and get these smaller lots. But we're seeing that maybe the pendulum needs to swing back the other way a little bit. Because, and I'm sure Greg can address, the long-term issues of this compact of a subdivision could be a very, very difficult challenge in the future.
It's complex.
Yes, sir.
And the introduction today is a good one. It's a good start. So we know we need to do something. At least we think we know we need to do something, and so let's start the process. Just one particular comment, there are a lot of really nice, very nice condo developments or clusters, if you please, and they're experiencing the exact same problems. They don't have a yard that they have to maintain or anything, but they have a two-car garage, and all of a sudden their two-car garage becomes, stuff goes in there, Christmas decorations, you know, that they store, different things, and the garage is no longer really a garage. It's their outside storage building, the barn that we talked about. And that's what I see in some of these things that we have here, that they don't have, they don't have the potential to park their cars in a garage. So they're parking them in the driveway, and the driveway is not big enough for more than two cars, and all of a sudden you're parking on the street, you're parking in the yard. And is that what we really want our county to look like as we go forward? Those are some of the things that maybe we can address, and I'm excited about the potential to address those.
Mr. Chairman?
Rhonda.
Thank you. One of the things that I also think it's time for us to look at is our fee schedule in the Planning and Engineering Department and Building and Codes. We know that we're limited on what we can charge in terms of impact fees, but I don't know how long it's been since we've done any sort of rate increase for the fees and permits that are charged through those departments. And so I think it might be worthwhile for us to begin to examine what the cost is to provide those services versus what we're charging.
Yes, ma'am. We're getting started on our budget process right now. We can definitely put that on the list of things to start looking at. I know we've looked at some fee comparisons to some of the cities and counties around us in the past, and we can update that this year or two to kind of see where we fall and where there may be some opportunity for some fee changes.
Mr. Chairman, as to Rhonda's comment, I was going to ask a question to you. Sometimes we only hear what we see in the news or read, but can you, as a fellow commissioner, you or Ms. Allen or Pitt, update us on any type of movement we may have with our Rutherford County delegation on additional sources of revenue as we head into this session?
Chip, the alternative revenue concerns go back more than 20 years. The alternatives that we have are a drop in the bucket as to what the county might need. Although there are some, none are as significant as growth taxes. And that's what the county commission has been looking at for a good long while, the last several years anyway. The approach that the county commission is taking right now is a little different than the approach that we've taken in the past. A resolution was passed before the county commission, week before last, I believe it was, and maybe three weeks ago. And the annual meeting with our Rutherford County Legislative Delegation is scheduled for this coming Monday night, and that will be the main topic that will be discussed. And the topic is different than it has been in the past. We think that it might hold a lot of significant items that would pass legal mustard. So the approach is going to be to allow a county that's high-growth like Rutherford and already has a growth tax, if you please, in place, like our development tax, to alter that tax as needed. And so it wouldn't be that we were asking to create new legislation or new law, but allow counties that are in a high-growth situation like Rutherford to at least amend their existing ordinance. And that's the approach that we're taking, and I think that's the approach that we'll ask our legislative delegation for some help going forward. Nick Christensen and our attorneys have looked at this and think that we have some potential there to make that happen. And that's what we're going to do. And next week will be pretty important as we have our meeting with our legislative delegation to see if we can get some help from them at the state level. So that's where we are, and that's where we'll be going forward. I'd like to say that there's a Plan B, but I'm not sure that there is at this point in time. It appears that to raise the type of funds that we're going to have to raise in the future just to meet infrastructure needs is going to be significant. That day of reckoning is not before us, it's behind us. So I hope that answers your question. So we're looking at the alternative, which is just take something we already have and have the opportunity to increase that as needed, if needed.
I appreciate that. Is there any way, Mr. Chairman, that, I don't know, Doug, if you'll be attending or be a part of that? I don't know that my schedule allows me to sit in. Is it going to be a Zoom meeting to where?
It will be, yes, it will be.
I would personally like, if somebody from within the planning department could write up a synopsis as well of some of the discussion, again, hearing firsthand other than what we may read in the newspaper, what discussion was, what's on the table. Is it something too much to ask, Doug, or somebody just to type up something and send to each planning?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure we can handle that. Even if we're not able to physically attend a meeting, it'll be on the YouTube channel. We can just kind of watch it and kind of give an overview of it. I mean, we'll just kind of see what our schedules look like next week, but yeah, I don't see any problem with that.
It's not too much, I appreciate that, Doug.
We can ask Rebecca to send the Zoom link to all of our planning commissioners, if we could, Doug, could we do that?
We could. I'll ask Rachel.
Anyone. There's a lot of planning commissioners who are also county commissioners that will be attending that meeting in person or via Zoom as well. I don't know if all of our legislative delegation will be in attendance, but I think that they're, most of them will be one way or the other, whether it's in person or Zoom. So there's a lot of us as commissioners that will attend one way or the other as well. And once again, this is an important night for us, but it's also something that we're looking at hopefully differently than we've looked at in the past, because we've asked for a change in state law, and we're really not asking them to change anything other than give us the opportunity to evaluate our needs in this county and maybe alter our structure, alter the structure that we already have in place and not create something new. So that's the approach that we're taking, and that's the next step hopefully in getting our legislative delegation to give us some help there. And once again, our delegation is made up of folks that are elected and the resolution passed 20 yes and one no, I believe. So it's close to unanimous, although it's not unanimous, it's pretty darn close. So we'll once again ask our legislative delegation to give us some help. And I'm confident, I'm confident this time that they will, or at least help, try to help. Answer your question, Pitt. Chip, are you okay with that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Very good. Doug, you have anything else?
That was the last thing I had.
Okay. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, February the 8th, and that will be a 6:00 PM meeting right here in this courtroom. Anyone have anything else? Thank you for, once again, your participation, and we appreciate all that you do for the county, and have a good rest of the day. We're adjourned.